Good evening. Welcome to the Post and Courier's Palmetto Politics Live Greenville City Council Debate. I'm Sam Hall, Managing Editor of the Post and Courier. This forum is part of a series of debates that we're doing across South Carolina and a part of our ongoing political coverage, which is anchored by the Palmetto Politics Newsletter, which you can subscribe to at postandcourier.com. Tonight's event is cosponsored by the Greenville Chamber of Commerce and made possible through the financial support of AARP South Carolina. It's my pleasure to introduce Charmaine Fuller, the State Director of AARP South Carolina, to offer a few remarks.
I am Charmaine Fuller Cooper, State Director for AARP South Carolina, and we are delighted to be in Greenville this evening. My colleague and I, Patrick Cobb, along with Janet, who's volunteering with us tonight, we're here for one simple reason. We recognize that communities are part of the change and that we all desire livable communities. AARP's founding was simple. Our founding was that no one should have to live in a chicken coop. When our founder, Dr. Ethel Percy Andrews, founded AARP well over 65 years ago, and even before that with the Retired Teachers Association, she found one of her former distinguished educators living in a chicken coop, and that was AARP's simple founding. Our call to action to make sure that people had financial security, health security, and a peace of mind to have a socially fulfilled life. So tonight, I ask for you to take our issue seriously. AARP is nonpartisan. We don't endorse any candidates. We don't oppose any candidates, and we do not provide financial support. So I'm one of the few people who can walk out of the room tonight and nobody's going to ask me for a check. But we are happy to be here with you this evening, and back over to Sam.
Thank you to AARP of South Carolina, and I also want to thank the Croc Center for providing this space for tonight's debate. To begin, we have two candidates for the at-large city council seat. They are, in alphabetical order, Incumbent Councilwoman Dorothy Dow and challenger Randall I would also like to introduce tonight's panelists. Eric Connor is the Greenville editor of the Post and Courier, and Jason Zachar is Senior Vice President of the Greenville Chamber of Commerce. Finally, before we begin, let me quickly touch on the ground rules for this evening's debate. In just a moment, each candidate will be given two minutes for opening remarks. The order was chosen by a pre-debate coin flip. Randall Fowler will go first. After opening remarks, our panelists will ask questions of each candidate, rotating between the two candidates, in the same order as the opening remarks. Candidates will have two minutes to answer each question. Any rebuttals, when allowed by the moderator or panelist, will be limited to one minute. The discussion may extend with additional responses at the discretion of the panelist or the moderator. Panelists are also allowed to ask related follow-up questions. Questions have not been discussed or shared in advance with the candidates. At the conclusion of the debate, each candidate will be given one minute for closing remarks in the same order. We want everyone to be able to share their vision for the city council, but we also want to stay on time and get to as many questions as possible. I will monitor time during the responses and will let you know when time expires. Our timekeeper sitting up front will also hold up signs to let you know as time counts down, and we have the timer on the screen available for you. Candidates, please avoid talking over or interrupting each other, and members of the audience, please do not applaud during or after their remarks. With that, let's begin. Mr. Fowler, your opening remarks.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the Post and Courier and AARP for hosting tonight. Also, I want to thank my beautiful wife and wonderful son for coming out here tonight. I love you both. Thank you so much. So my name is Randall Fowler, and I am running for the at-large seat on the Greenville City Council. And why am I running? I'm running because I had an issue in my community, like a lot of us here. I'm a normal citizen, working a standard nine-to-five job, but I had an issue. And I went to the border zone and appeals with that issue, and it wasn't resolved. Then I went to city council with that issue, and it still wasn't resolved. No one spoke up for me, and no one stood up for this. And for me, that was a problem. That was a problem that started me on this process of looking at our local government and saying, do I feel like my problems are being addressed by our local government? And so tonight, you're going to hear two stories. You're going to hear one story of what has taken place over the past four years. You're going to hear about the four years of Greenville here, and there's nothing wrong with that. A lot of good things have happened. But we're also going to hear tonight, for me, a vision of what the future of Greenville can be. Well, we're not going to be looking in the rearview mirror of what the past four years have been, but we're going to be looking forward to what Greenville can become. We all agree Greenville is an amazing city, but we can be better. And tonight, I look forward to outlining my vision for how we can be better. So thank you so much, and I look forward to explaining it all to you tonight.
Good. Can y'all hear? So I'm Dorothy Dow. I'm one of your at-large representatives on Greenville City Council, and I'd also like to thank not just the Post and Courier, but also the Greenville Chamber for hosting this event, and AARP for sponsoring this event, and for all the people who have joined us here tonight. I am a 34-year resident of Greenville. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering from Duke University and an MBA from the Darlemore School of Business. In 1989, I was fortunate enough to be recruited to come here to work for the best engineering firm in Greenville. My husband and I, who's here tonight, my husband and I bought our house on Cleveland Street. We still live there. We're never leaving. We are here to stay. We raised our two children through the public school system, who are now adults and living their own life. And my current professional job is as a small business owner. I own an academic planning and consulting business that I founded about 13 years ago. In 2019, when I ran, I ran on access to affordable housing, access to transportation, and managing our growth. So let's talk about what I've done towards those goals in the last four years. In the four years I've been on council, we have produced 1,400 units of affordable housing, and with this recent closure of a $33 million accelerated funding bond, we will bring 650 more units to fruition for development in the next two years. We've made significant advancement in our transit goals. Our GreenLink Operations Center will come online next year, and that will be a game-changer for bringing us forward on our transit development plan. And managing our growth, we just implemented the Greenville Development Code, which I championed through the process, and I eagerly look forward to seeing how that affects the quality of life. I'm running on my record. I'm very proud of it and the expertise that I currently bring to city council as a mechanical engineer.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, let's move on to our first questions. The first question will be for Mr. Fowler.
Mr. Fowler, the city of Greenville experiences stress with relatively low permanent population compared to what we have to serve during the daytime. How can the city of Greenville meet this challenge and ensure that we're still providing top-level services to residents and to businesses?
So when we think about Greenville, there are no borders of the city of Greenville. No one is stopping individuals from coming in here. Unfortunately, there are some invisible borders around the city of Greenville that universally, I'm sure Ms. Dow and I will agree on this nearly 100%, that one of those big borders is housing availability and housing affordability. You know, people look at the city of Greenville because of our great tourism board and the many things that we offer here within the city, and they say, I want to be there. I want to be there. And then they look for housing. They look for the cost of housing. They say it's too high. They look at the availability of housing and say there's a scarcity of housing. And so within the city, when we're looking at this, how do we make sure that these individuals stay here and not just come and just sample then leave, but how do they stay here and become contributing members of our community? And it's very simple. We address this, as the city council has been doing. We ensure that there's housing affordability throughout the city. And how do we do that? Well, very simply, we build quality relationships with our local developers. By building quality relationships with our local developers, we ensure that the individuals who live here and work here, they understand the integrity of our neighborhoods, so they're not trying to change. We're not trying to force high-density housing in neighborhoods that were not accustomed to this. They also ensure that they are aware of the services that are needed within the city. It's one thing to have developers here in our city that understand the needs of a neighborhood. It's another, that's an entirely different situation, when we have developers coming in from out of state who look at neighborhoods that have low cost for housing, come in and just see dollar bill signs across the way. We have to avoid that. We have to make sure that when we look at the city of Greenville, that we're in a position to not just partially, but fully address housing ability consistently throughout the time on city council.
Councilwoman, you have one minute.
Thank you. So the question was, how do we respond to the influx of commuters into the city of Greenville who don't necessarily live here? I would argue that they're coming here to work here or to be a tourist here. So how do we respond to that in terms of funding their needs? It represents a strain on our infrastructure every time a car drives on it, every time a tourist comes. Certainly, you know, we have to provide that infrastructure for safety. Half of our budget comes from our business license fees. So for everyone who does travel, commute into Greenville to work here, thank you. Your businesses are contributing to half of our budget. Additionally, we invest heavily in our infrastructure and must continue to do so. In addition to that, to absorb the increased tourism, we are on a lot of top lists. We recognize we have grown. We have funded 10 new police officers to help respond to the influx of people coming into Greenville, be it tourism or be it for work. We do welcome them in here, and we welcome their spending in our small businesses.
Thank you. Next question.
Councilwoman Dow, we talk about gentrification of neighborhoods and people being priced out. Downtown Greenville was once lined with locally-owned small businesses, but as downtown has prospered, more and more national retailers have taken over. Small business owners say they are forced out by high rents. Is this Greenville's identity going forward in the next four years? What will you do that is actionable to keep small businesses a part of the fabric of downtown?
So we do, with all due respect, we still do have many locally-owned businesses downtown and are proud to do so. It is not the city's role to control rents. We legally cannot put a rent cap on what property owners can charge. However, the tools we do have in our toolbox are to incentivize locally-owned small businesses for the areas where we really want to attract them. So what does that look like in action? How can we save them money from what we do control in the city's toolkit? For example, we have a huge, huge barrier to workforce entry, and that is due to lack of childcare availability. That is not unique to Greenville. That is a problem across the nation. So in response to that, as a mother who faced the very same barrier to workforce entry, when I had my first child in 1993, I championed having a waived business license fee for childcare providers for their first five years to help them get on their feet when they're in that startup phase. We also are very interested in artists. We also are interested in affordable groceries in our special emphasis neighborhoods, and each of those businesses has been given a waiver on their business license fees for the first five years to invite them into the city and help, you know, reinforce them. I also would like to mention, early on in my tenure, when we were faced with a pandemic that I did not prepare for while a candidate, I was very quick to recognize the strain it would put on the backs of our small businesses, particularly in the hospitality industry. I championed the small business boost grants, where every business in retail or hospitality, i.e. food and beverage, was able to apply for a small business boost grant of $1,000, and that came right at the start of COVID. So I'm very proud to champion those locally-owned businesses. We're here for them, and we will keep being here for them.
Mr. Fowler, you have one minute for a rebuttal.
Thank you. So I would say, yes, we need to take care of our local businesses. I do not believe that taxing our local businesses is actually a great thing for them. I think our current tax structure on our local businesses is inhibiting them. We're seeing big companies come in. We're seeing big companies come through downtown. We're seeing at the Commons, we're seeing these local businesses taxed at a rate that is prohibitive for them to grow and develop, and we're seeing that constraint on them. There are certain industries and there are certain businesses that are getting some favoritism, as Ms. Dow just outlined a few of them, but this should not be singled out, just a few. This should be an approach that we should look at all businesses within the city. We need to have a robust workforce, and the only way we do that is have thriving businesses within the city. By taxing those businesses at a rate that is not sustainable, we are hindering our long-term growth as a city.
As the city works to redefine its role in economic development, what more can the city do to address race-based disparities in education, income, and health outcomes?
So I think our job as a city is to recognize that our success has been based on our partnerships that we are known for. We, as a city, are uniquely positioned and well-known for our public-private partnerships. It is really the secret sauce of our success, and we need to continue to do that. So these partnerships, our groups such as REEM, such as the Greenville Homeless Alliance, such as the Greenville Housing Authority, all of these, and Greater Good Greenville, certainly, to mention a few, all of these private partners help advise the city and help bring policy forward to us to help everyone thrive. We must be a city where everyone thrives. I do think, on that note, it is critically important that for the city to have relationships with private partners, as well as our faith-based communities, it's important that those relationships exist on city council. So as a 34-year resident who spent decades in the school systems volunteering, who has served on multiple nonprofits, who worked, continues to work as a small business owner, who served on her church session, taught many kids Sunday School, those partnerships are part of what I've built over 34 years and will continue to reach out to my allies in the private sector, in the nonprofit sector, and certainly the relationships that I've built with our state legislators and federal legislators over the last four years to partner with us on that.
Yes, so when we talk about race-based disparity in education, this hits home to me because I didn't just volunteer in schools. I spent a career building schools. I spent a career looking at low-income communities throughout the United States. These were minority communities that were underserved by an educational system that was failing them, and we built over 50 schools, looking at this perspective. I brought that perspective here to Greenville, where I worked in West Greenville for about six years, helping to build out schools, understanding that there is a system that does not provide educational opportunities to all students, to all families, and that's a problem. And that's not volunteer experience. That is real-world experience that I have. These are public and private partnerships that I've had a history of building, over 50 schools. Continuation from there, after leaving schools, working with the YMCA, where I'm the incoming president of the Board of the YMCA, where we're serving communities that have this exact need. We understand that government did not create the issue of racism and racist disparities, but we know definitively it has a clear role in solving them.
Thank you. Next question.
In your introduction, you mentioned a major factor in challenging for the seat is more city council influence over the most important decisions of city boards. These boards are appointed by city council to do this work. Where do you draw the line on the council intervening? Could this not overly politicize the process?
Yeah, there's clearly a danger that it could be that way, but I'm willing to accept a little danger for the right outcome. Now, I understand, as an adult, that we are not always going to get the results we want from elections, from decisions, but we do understand that we, as people, deserve a voice. And unfortunately, we have unelected boards throughout our city, filled with good people, not bad people. These are good people, but filled with unelected individuals on these boards that are making decisions that have more authority than our city council, that have more authority than our mayor and our city manager. And so we, as a city, need to reclaim that voice. And so my proposal would be, when we look at these unelected boards, we make sure that the decisions that they make do not disregard city plans and neighborhood. If they do, which was the instance in my situation, where there was a storage facility going to be built that was against the Wade Hampton Development Plan, that the city experts said don't do, and a resounding chorus of individuals within our neighborhood spoke out against, that that decision then would go to the city council for ultimate approval. I think that it's time that the people of Greenville have a greater voice. Our city is growing faster than ever. We cannot allow individuals that well-meaning and may have some expertise do not operate in a democratic way. I want to make sure that the people who are making these decisions for us, those are people that we can hold accountable, that we can increase the transparency, and ensure that the decisions that we want as a city are actually seen through on these boards.
Councilwoman.
So the incident that Mr. Fowler is talking about was tragic. I don't think it was the decision that any council member was pleased with. I think all ideas are welcome and appreciated for the way our commissions and boards work. We do have over 130 volunteers that work on a commission. I myself worked on a commission and served as chair, and that's a great way to sit in the seat, to see through the lens of the people serving. It's an interesting idea. What council does have the authority to do is appoint people to these boards, but there are two boards, both the BZA and the Planning Commission, where we don't have the legal authority to do any more than just that. These boards were set up some time ago, and the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Act precludes us from doing what you're saying. It's a great idea, and when those bad decisions come, it's sad, and we have to relook at who we point, but we can't do what you're saying because it is against state law.
Thank you.
One of the things that we have, this continual challenge is transit, and how is that, what methods do you have to expand access to transit, and how do you kind of work with the county to do that?
Great question. So I think it's, when we look at the city and when we look at the county, there's definitely a different way, the city council and the county council. And so first, before we even look at that, we have to understand that in order to be an effective legislator, to be effective in any leadership role, you have to be able to build relationships in diverse communities, and this is something in my career as a builder of schools in neighborhoods throughout the southeast, my work as an HR executive, I've had to mitigate for an argument, and work, disagreed with on a variety of different levels. And so in order to effectively work with the city council and the county council, we have to have an experience that. When it comes to our transit at the Warden System, I think Greenlink has done a fantastic job. Just a few weeks ago, I spent an entire Saturday riding the Greenlink buses all around, and they do it a phenomenal job. What I'm concerned about, though, is the fact that over the past four years, we've seen a $20 million budget shortfall. Unfortunately, Ms. Dow was the city council liaison to that, and so while we have grown, the question is, to what expense? To what expense have we managed this properly financially, or are we putting ourselves in a position where we're overextending ourselves? We're promising more than we can financially deliver. And so that, for me, is something that I would look into specifically as I'm building those relationships with county council.
So transit, I am the liaison to the Greenville Transit Authority, and the way the funding works right now is the city of Greenville provides about 40% of their operating budget, and the county chips in about 60% of their operating budget, and I do commend my partners on county council for fulfilling that. We have been very lucky in Greenville to be awarded several federal grants just in the last two years from the bipartisan infrastructure law, about $6 million to outfit every single bus stop, as well as north of $25 million to provide compressed natural gas capability at our new GreenLink operations and maintenance facility. I think our biggest hindrance to growing it right now is our shortage of drivers. In terms of the relationship with county council, I work very closely with both Councilmember Seaman and Councilmember Mitchell, both of whom represent city geographies, and am frequently reaching out to both Dan Tripp and Butch Curvin, Butch as the former county chair, and Dan as the current county chair, and look forward to continuing those partnerships.
Thank you. Our next question is for the councilwoman.
This, if it works. Councilmember Dow. The city subsidizes the massive Greenville Convention Center to the tune of about $1 million a year. Do you believe this is sustainable, and on the horizon are stalled plans for a conference center along the Reedy River downtown? What do you think the vision should be for that, for both, and what is the plan?
So I would take exception to your term stalled plans. Not everything that's planned is revealed to the Post and Courier until we have a solid plan. But I do believe two things. One, I do believe we need a downtown conference center. We do have the hotel inventory to support it, and quite frankly, I'm a little tired of going to weddings at the Hugh and Not Loft. We need more event space. So we on council are very much supportive of a new downtown conference center, but also as the liaison to the Visit Greenville Board, I have a huge appreciation for what size of conference center do we need to meet the market demand. So Greenville is the site of the convention center, which is the largest space available in this immediate region, and we're also the home to the Hyatt. That's one of the smallest event spaces in the region. What we need is a conference center to meet in the middle. So that ballroom size and the meeting space breakout size is critical, that we're not cannibalizing from either of those two. So I look towards our partners at Visit Greenville to say, what can we market as a conference center, right? And then look at, how long will it be relevant? I don't want to build a conference center that five years down the road, it doesn't have the technology that's relevant in a conference center. As far as the convention center, we do subsidize it, almost to $1 million a year. We can keep doing that, but it's taking away from other things in our budget, and I'm not in support of continuing that. I think the county will need to step up and be a partner in subsidizing that convention center to move forward.
You have one minute.
So let me be very clear and very direct on this. We need a conference center. We need to sell the convention center. Why is the conference center stalled? Very simply, the Post and Courier has done a great job reporting that the reason it's stalled is because we haven't been able to figure out how much square footage a ballroom should be. Now, I have never had anyone give me multimillion-dollar properties before, but that's the situation that the city is in. The city's been given, literally offered up, multi-million dollars, millions and millions of dollars worth of property that's just sitting there waiting to be used, and why can't we use it? Because we don't know how big of a ballroom to use? Now, I am not the smartest person in the world, by any means, but I feel like Greenville has some of the smartest people in the world here in our city. I believe that we can come to and say, we have a big hospitality industry. How big of a conference center do we need? How big of a ballroom do we need? When it comes to the convention center, we have great partners with the county, and we should be able to sell it with them. We should be able to clearly sell them. If we have these great partnerships, and I am very happy that Ms. Dow has done great work with them, then we should be able to take that step and relinquish it to them.
Before we move on to the closing remarks, first, I want to apologize to our candidates and to the audience for the technical difficulties. Hopefully, we will be able to get those addressed, but I do apologize for that. I also want to thank you for coming out today. I want to thank AARP of South Carolina, the Croc Center, and the Greenville Chamber of Commerce for helping us with this event. I also want to remind you that you can follow complete coverage of this race and of politics in general at postandcourier.com/greenville. Now we will move on to our closing remarks, and Mr. Fowler, you get to go first.
Thank you. So I was not born in Greenville, but I made Greenville home. I moved here with my son as a single father, and we found a city that loved us. We found a city that was very accepting of our unique family dynamic. We found a city that opened its arms. We found great schools. We found great friends. We found great churches. We found great places to work and invest ourselves in. And we found, most importantly, a neighborhood that looked at us and said, you have an opportunity to make this home here. And so as I look at Greenville and I look over the path, Greenville's done some amazing things. I know we can be better. I know we can be more responsive to the citizens here in Greenville. I know that the issues that we all face day to day, when it comes to our roads that need repair, when it comes to housing availability and affordability, these are all issues we face daily. We have a clear plan to do that. We have a clear plan to fix our roads, provide an economic engine of jobs within downtown, and ensuring that our infrastructure is in place to afford a
Thank you.
... throughout our local government.
Councilwoman.
So I'm glad Greenville welcomed you. They welcomed me, too, and I think that's our greatest strength, that we welcome newcomers. A couple of points of information. We do know the size of the conference center to build, and that is online as a public study. We do need a $35,000 square football room. It's well documented. We're finding the site that will accommodate that. And it won't fit on the river. So I think now, more than ever, as Greenville is enjoying some of its best moments and its greatest challenges, we need really strong leadership on city council. I ran in 2019 saying we needed the A Team. I am a member of the A Team. As a holder of a Bachelor of Science in Engineering, a Master's in Business, four years of experience, 34 years of living here, volunteering is where you do see the underbelly and the needs in a community. I think I bring that skill set to council, and I ask for everyone's vote to let me keep doing it for another four years.
Thank you.
Everything that happens in politics is local. It affects your neighbors. It affects your streets, your beliefs, your emotions, your pocketbook. Everything is politics.
I love covering South Carolina politics because there are so many characters, so many big personalities.
And they're just people, and their beliefs, and their attitudes, and what they do, and it's an arena.
We have some great people on our team that have just a really deep breadth of institutional knowledge about the state and about the politics that are at play.
We know the politicians. We We have their cell phone numbers. We are here in the State House with them every day. If there's something that I want confirmed, I can just walk up to the representative or the senator or walk down to the governor's office and ask. The Palmetto Politics Newsletter has all of our politics content in one place three times a week, so you'll never miss a story.
It's going to be your best source of what's breaking in politics in South Carolina. When you have an organized, dedicated, five-member political team, I mean, you try to give the most coverage, the most in-depth coverage, the most accurate coverage, the most up-to-date coverage of everything in the state, and that's what The Post and Courier is doing.